Gavel.
You need a phone app?
Thank you. Alright guys, we're gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Nishaba Regional School Committee at 6 o'clock PM tonight on October 8th. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next on the agenda is citizens' comments. We do not have any citizens looking to comment, so we're gonna move on to the next item, which is executive session. And I will take the liberty of moving. It says here, I'd like to move to enter into executive session tonight at 6:01 PM pursuant to master of the law, chapter 30A, section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And the chair so declares, as I do. The session will include the school committee, the superintendent, director of human resources, Jessica Murdock, assistant superintendent of teaching and learning Laura Friend, assistant superintendent of finance and operations Ross Malcurn, and the director of student services Ryan Demanche. Committee will reconvene to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
You declare.
I declare. Yeah, and we are going in. Alright, so I will start by voting yes. Shondor?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And Sharon?
Yes.
So we already...
You know, by all means, make yourself comfortable when you come in.
Sure if you come, we're an executive session. Ryan knows you get to use my office and do homework, whatever.
Accepting coming in your way. Alright, everybody. So we are back in regular session. And we do have a couple of things to get through before we get to our new friends in the room, which is very exciting. The first thing or the next thing on our agenda here, now that we're back from executive session, is the consent agenda. So I'll try to aim for emotion.
Move to a consent agenda of October eighth, two twenty five.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the consent agenda? None? Do you have a puzzled looks, Scott?
I just don't remember seeing the documents associated with it. Are they attached to the meeting?
Let's have a conversation about it. C and D. There is a grant. So you're talking about the comprehensive school health services grant. You're also talking about the Friends of Music.
Right off my lap.
Donation. Oh, good.
Oh, good.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda? Alright, thanks, everybody. Next item is the school committee chairperson update, and I have nothing in addition for you this evening. So I am pleased to announce that we have our student representatives here. Our representative who has gone with us for so long, Ryan Nitro. And we have a new student representative who we're very excited to, Michelle, I turn to you.
I would love to say something.
Feel free.
I want to introduce to everyone Maria Almeida. Maria is very excited to be here with us, as we've talked about. I first met Maria two years ago when we had our first advisory group. She stayed on the full principle of the superintendent's advisory all year last year. Will be again this year as we are convening, I think, in two weeks, is it, Ryan?
Yes, up to summer than the twentieth.
Is that part of your... So anyway, want to welcome and introduce Maria to the group. She's going to be a great adjacent to the committee.
Should we applaud? It's thrilling to have you. Feel free to introduce yourself.
Okay, so there's really not much to say, but I'm just really excited to be here, really excited to be a part of this.
All right, what grade are you in right now? What grade are you in?
Oh, I'm a junior right now.
Great. And what town do you hail from?
Lancaster.
Fantastic. I like that cross-representation.
It's been very exciting to watch Maria grow from, you know, everybody enters in high school as that nervous freshman, wondering what life's going to be like and growing into the leader that she's becoming. So we're very excited to have her.
Yeah, I can definitely second that. See, like StuCo and she's kind of been around and kind of doing the same things that I have been for when I was a little younger. So it was definitely cool to see too for me. I even get into it after that. I think she's ready to go. So as you guys know, we had the Wolf Day pretty recently. So I can share a little bit about my experience during Wolf Day and she can share hers. So I started, I love the backyard games. I think that's fun. And I think for like the showbook community, I think it was an important thing to have. Because people were actually kind of going out and hanging and interacting with each other, which is like awesome in kind of today's world. I think tapping the phones, like staying in the pocket while we're out at Wolf Day was definitely a big thing. And then I tied that shirt, which I was pretty proud of from my work. I'm not the artistic type. But other than that, that's what Wolf Day kind of had in store for me.
Yeah, so for me, it was also extremely fun. I stayed the whole time at paint face paint or whatever. Because I just got so entertained and I started by getting my face all painted and then I painted a bunch of freshman faces. It was amazing. And I think just us, the upperclassmen being there and doing those things, like not being afraid of putting ourselves out there. It shows a lot to them because at the beginning, there was like nobody there. And then we started getting my, our faces painted. I started telling my friends to get their faces painted and everyone was there. So yeah, that was a big thing that I saw, like us doing something and like seeing how it's okay to do that too and coming out and just having fun with us. It was pretty amazing.
I ended up there too at the very end. Got a little action on my face. So outside of Wolf Day, the PSAT is coming up for the juniors. Senior class photo on Friday. So I'm sure we'll be all organized and ready for that, my class. Yeah, college apps are going for a lot of us seniors, which is fun, exciting, nerve-wracking, all of that. And then for the athletics, soccer's having a breast cancer awareness game tomorrow night, which we've been posting about everywhere on Instagram, trying our best to get some numbers there. And then the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives is still having their assembly coming up on the eighteenth. I'm going to talk to Maria a little bit about that outside of this, see if she's interested. And then on Tuesday, October fourteenth, some of the high schoolers are visiting all the middle schoolers. To meet with eighth graders about the high school. I did this last year for the extracurriculars. Now I'm gone. I think I'm going to hop in between the world language program part and the extracurricular part again. So that's what I have. I think it covers most of it. Unless Maria has anything she wants to add that I missed.
Well, nothing on the top of my head. I'm also going to be, are you going for Stow?
Um, yes.
Yeah, I'm going to be going for Lancaster. And I'm going to be talking about also world language, but I think, I mean, I'm most likely going to end up talking about something else here. So yes, about StuCo and all this fun activity. So we're excited.
Yeah, you'll be able to hear about what happens at both of those middle schools. Should be cool. Do you have any questions?
Excellent. Thank you so much, guys. Yes.
For those of you who were on the committee two years ago, you might remember it was around this time of year. Hansi and Ava are representatives of the time brought forward that they were working with students on school spirit because that was important to them. And they wanted to put some efforts together. And they specifically pointed to elevating Wolf Day as a way to connect and build relationships with students. Because when you have that, it impacts engagement, impacts attendance. So to hear that you guys are setting the example on that school spirit and getting other students engaged, I think is tremendous.
Thank you.
And it's definitely something we talk about in StuCo. Like we always, they're trying to find out more ways of getting, especially, I'll say especially the seniors because they tend to leave a lot. We're trying to find ways around that, but also get the freshmen really excited about it. Because I mean, I guess nowadays, as Ryan said, like with the phones, no one really gets excited about things anymore like that. We, that's something we're definitely working on. Oh, is that the notes?
Yeah, this is the stupid.
Oh, okay. That's what I was trying to open up. Yeah, thanks. So yeah, so that's definitely something we try to look.
And then, yes, StuCo's, Maria's way more involved in definitely StuCo than I am, but I go to a meeting when I can. And they're doing different, they're on the topic of school spirit. They have different ideas for Halloween's. Like we're going to try to do a costume contest for like a spirit week, something like that, and then have votes for like the most spirits, something like that. So I think that would be definitely cool.
Yeah, last year we did costume contest and throughout the day, we kept taking pictures of people and putting them on the TVs around so everyone could see. And it was pretty fun. And also, it's not written here, but we had a meeting today and we were talking about a Halloween hunt. Because we normally do one for Easter and it was, it was pretty successful last year. Like, I mean, I feel like people were really excited about it. Throughout the day, that's all I could hear. So I think doing a Halloween one would be really cool too.
Fantastic. Any questions for the students? And I understand that there are more Wolf Days to come.
Yes, definitely. And yeah, StuCo, it's like well-integrated because StuCo kind of comes up with different ideas for what kind of activities Wolf Day can offer. And then also each teacher has kind of the opportunity to start their own little workshop. So it's fun.
And I think that the communications subcommittee chair and the school committee chair, the two of us, are going to be joining StuCo in December. And so we have that meeting set up, everyone, so that we can do some outreach and head down to talk with the whole group. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Alright, everybody. Maria, thanks so much for being here. We appreciate your time, your energy and following in Ryan's footsteps. He's a really great example for everybody. Just want to say thanks to you too, Ryan.
Yeah, he's been pretty great.
So as always, guys, you're free to say, but you do not need to, you know, if you're busy. So you can kind of come and go as you please. Alright, thanks, guys. Ryan, you're moving faster these days.
I know, I'm healthy.
Stay that way, kid. Alright, guys. Moving on, here we have the superintendent's report. So I'll turn to Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to take a moment to break protocol and for all the right reasons. I want to take a moment, forgive me for just a second, just take a moment to acknowledge and remember that we lost somebody really important in our community this week in Chief Luke Hamburger in the Bolden Police Department. And Chief Hamburger was a great partner of the school system. While he was only chief for around a year, we taught, we collaborated. His support to the school system, combined with how they called on us for support when there was a fire nearby and they needed to state vehicles. He's going to be missed. And so we're all feeling a loss around here this week, and I just want to acknowledge that. Calling hours have been planned for on Sunday, two to five p.m. at McNally and Watson Funeral Home in Clinton. And the funeral service will be on Monday, October thirteenth at the Steepo Fellowship in Lancaster. It's important to note, Chief Hamburger was a student here in Neshoba and a resident, longtime community member. Has relatives in the system now. And so our hearts go out to them, their families and their loved ones. Okay, let's move on to talk a little bit about the calendar for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We have convened the calendar, and I have to admit to the committee that I was ambitious and hoping to bring a recommendation to you at the next meeting. And I would like to declare right now that will not be happening. Rather, we should expect something, certainly think maybe the second November meeting or the first December meeting. I'm looking to Sharon because Sharon is your representative on the calendar committee. The reason why we are looking now to do this work, this is typically something that happens a little bit later, we'll bring it to the committee in February, is that we have work to plan relative to the high school. And that when we leave the high school in the spring of twenty-seven, June of twenty-seven, we begin abatement and demolition that high school right away. And so we're looking to gain as much time as we possibly can for that period of time to do the demolishing and abatement. So we need to look at the FY twenty-six calendar to do that. And what we have working against us is it happens to be a year where Labor Day falls on September seventh. The latest start we could possibly have. So I'm not bringing forward any recommendations today, but we will be bringing those forward in the future. We have teacher representatives that are on that committee with us as well that will help us walk that. In addition, the governor has signed this summer that September first will be primary day across the state of Massachusetts in the fall of twenty-twenty-six. And we have the off-cycle election happening that November. So that will impact some of the activities that we have. And we're going to be looking to build some efficiencies. So I'm just signaling to the committee that work today. And we will come to a recommendation, either the second meeting in November or the first meeting in December, depending on the work of our calendar committee getting those things completed.
So I'm going to put that we're going to be voting on that on December third, just as a placeholder?
I like it. Yeah. I think that's great. Thank you. Okay, next, I just want to let you know that October one is the annual date at which we do the count and submit our account for enrollment to the state. So that work, we have that count from October first. And in front of you is the draft number. Just know it takes the state until about the first week of December to certify numbers all across the Commonwealth and post them on their webpages. So these aren't official numbers. But it does give you a sense of how we're doing with enrollment all across the system. I just want to point out a few things to the committee here. And that is the column. You'll see a column labeled FY twenty-six PRO. That means projection. So we do a projection on October one to October one numbers annually. And so the way this would read for Florence Sawyer is last year at this time, we were projecting Florence Sawyer would have seven hundred thirty-eight students. It actualized at seven hundred twenty-eight. And the FY- And the FY October one, FY twenty-five number is where Florence Sawyer was last year, at seven hundred thirty-four. So you can see that Florence Sawyer came in, um, uh, six students less than last year's October number, and ten students less than the projection we had. Uh, you would note that in kindergarten, sixty-nine students actualized, we projected eighty. So that is the number that is nearly impossible for us to project, is the kindergarten number. So, most of the places where you see that, at Center School, for instance, you'll see a similar effect. Uh, Center School is, is twelve students under what the, the projection is, and I build the kindergarten projection based upon the average enrollment, October one enrollment of kindergarten in the previous five years. It's not an exact science, it's just a very general way to look at it. Um, so if you ultimately look at that, our total projection for the district at this time last year was two thousand nine hundred sixty-six students. We were four students above that projection, and then our October, uh, number last year was two thousand nine hundred ninety, and we look to be twenty students below that this year. As I look at what our forecast looks like, um, uh, it looks like we are stabilizing in terms of that decline enrollment that we have experienced over the last five years. And so, uh, we'll again do more of that when I come give the, uh, school choice presentation in April of, of where we are with our enrollment numbers, but, I will take any questions on those two items before I turn it over to Mr. Mulcaren for the road construction update.
Scott?
So I just wondered why we have three sections of pre-kindergarten where we're rolling some.
Yeah, two of the sections are half-day. So there are half-day sections and full-day sections, so they're not all the same.
There's only two sections by, I'm, I'm not finding the logic of why the other schools have two sections each, and then roll into three.
At Florence Sawyer School, section one is a full-day program. Section two is a half-day A M. program. At Center, we have a full-day program and a second full-day program. At M R E, we have a half-day program and an afternoon program, and then a specialized program.
And this is largely determined by I E P?
Yeah, this is determined by students because this is an integrated, uh, preschool model, so it's determined by I E P demands.
That's the right shirt, isn't it?
Boom. Uh, what other questions do we have about the enrollment piece, if any? I'm just noticing, Kirk, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to think forward to school choice, maybe I should have, but, don't you wanna keep the high school classes around two-twenty?
Yep. And we did that this year, uh, when you did school choice, but what actualized is more students coming to our high school once we did that, so that's, that's a good thing. But we set that limit at two-twenty because what we're really trying to keep it under at the high school is two-forty, to manage our departments and our things. So we're under that two-forty threshold. So think of the twenty-four to one classroom ratio times ten, is how the, the two-forty comes to actualize there.
What's the capacity of the new school?
Uh, the capacity of the new school is nine hundred and, I've only said this a thousand times.
At eighty percent.
Yeah, nine hundred and, and seventy-five students at eighty-five percent capacity, which rolls out to like one thousand eighty-six students.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're, we're still in good shape?
Yeah.
Any other questions, Amy?
So, another thing I noticed is that her enrollment is down twenty from last year.
Yep.
But I feel like usually you see, we, I've, in my time on the school committee, noticed a drop between the enrollment in eighth and ninth grade, and we're not seeing that this year.
We didn't see it as pronounced.
Yeah.
I don't have my computer in front of me.
It's like only four students difference between the eighth and ninth grade. Can you scroll down a little?
Well, but those are two different classes. That class of ninth graders.
So I'm not looking at the data, right?
Yeah. The class of two hundred and twenty-nine, when they were in eighth grade, was something like two hundred and fifty.
Okay, so that's.
So we did, still have, we still had students that elected to go to C T programming, um, or charter. It was, it was a significant drop, however. It was somewhere around fifteen to twenty students lower this time than it was in previous three years.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, let's keep scrolling.
Uh, we'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Mulcaren to talk about the road construction update.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Um, as you're all aware, uh, there is the bridge closure on Route one seventeen in Bolton, uh, just over by the Lancaster line. Um, overall, we had minimal impact on student arrival, uh, this week with the first week. So a couple of tweaks that were made during the day on Monday that mitigated any late arrivals that were minimal in Lancaster. So, um, we had another construction meeting update today with the Mass D O T. Uh, the project remains on schedule, so thank you to the Mass D O T for the updates, but also, without surprise, you know, our, our, um, partners in Bolton and Lancaster have been excellent with making sure that our buses are a priority, and that, uh, the light timing, the signage, all, uh, helps us get our kids to school on time, and safely for that matter too. Um, so, a lot of priority for them, for us, so thank you to, to all of our, our law enforcement partners. Um, you'll see here that we're gonna start a new section in the common, uh, with all the construction and updates on the roads that are happening across the district. Um, you know, these are necessary projects, but they are what they are. Um, so we'll continue to update and inform the community through the common with the roadwork section. Uh, any major pieces that come up, like the one seventeen bridge closure, will certainly get updated in a more specific notice. Um, I will say we'll have a update on the Four Bush Project that's coming up with the re- uh, replacement of a culvert. Uh, that will begin October twentieth and last approximately a month, so had that pre-construction meeting this week, and, uh, bus company is already aware, we're in partnership with Towne and Bolton, we're, we'll be in good shape, um, and going from there, so. That's, that's it for the construction update for right now.
That, that common went from a, a simple superintendent newsletter once a week to like an online magazine now, right? So I'm glad to hear those updates are going in the common.
Any questions on the construction? I just have one thing that's somewhat related. I was at the high school dismissal this past week, and I met our principal at the front entrance directing a thousand things. I noticed Mr. Kaiser in the parking lot directing cars like this. I saw Mr. Walker in the middle of one seventeen directing cars like this. Um, so despite the construction difficulties in front of that building and all the complexities of that zone, um, they are really moving people quickly. I was so appreciative of that extra duty.
This is a small way that, that you're sharing appreciation for Chief Hamburger, because he was the one that got them into the online courses on traffic management, so that they're prepared and could do those things.
They looked official. It was pretty good, so good job. No, but they looked official. So anyway, thank you, Russ.
Great. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent French. She has a special guest, uh, here tonight to talk about the math curriculum update.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing, and thank you to the committee. Um, I'd like to invite our curriculum director for math and science and everything in between, Candace McBarney, to share an update relative to our six through twelve math curriculum update, give you an update about what's going on in those spaces, share some information about family university offerings that we're going to be offering, to share information with families, and then potential, possible immediate next steps and future next steps. So with that, I turn it over to Ms. McBarney.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Friend, and thank you in committee for allowing me to come and give an update on, um, our six to twelve math work. So as you're aware, last year, we had entered the curriculum review, and we, and we took time to analyze our current practices, and, um, through that process, we decided that a new curricular resource was needed. So after reviewing many options and piloting two of them, we had decided to purchase Imagine Learning's illustrative mathematics. We felt that that best met our vision for student learning, and this curriculum is now being implemented in grades six through eight and Algebra One at both the eighth grade level and high school level. So we wrote and are following a comprehensive implementation plan for how this rollout would go. And I found out yesterday that, um, our plan is actually going to be used as an exemplar by Desi. I got an email asking permission for that, um, and they also used our instructional vision at a most recent, um, implement network meeting as an exemplar, uh, that we like looked at and talked through. So I'm really proud of the work we've done, but it was really nice to see, uh, Desi highlight that as well and recognize, um, all of our hard work there. So as part of the implementation plan, we hired a consultant, Heidi Subnani, who came highly recommended by some peer districts, and she has a podcast and is well-known. Uh, she's actually speaking right now at some national conferences. So she will be helping me in leading professional development for our teachers on the early releases, and also throughout the year through walkthroughs and other opportunities. Uh, we provided professional learning already to math teachers, special educators, instructional assistants, and our administrators. Uh, and that learning will also continue throughout the year in stages. Teachers introduced illustrative math to families that were able to attend the open house. And so now we will be offering to virtual, um, informational, I'm calling them coffee hours, but, um, times for parents or families to come and learn more about it. So that will be in the comments. It's gonna be October sixteenth from nine to ten, and October twentieth from two to three. We'll also record a presentation that we can, um, send in the common as well for any families that can't make it. And we'll explain all that in the common coming out this Friday. Uh, in addition, the high school math department continues to be in phase one of the review cycle with a focus on still analyzing our current practices, exploring course offerings and course levels. Uh, we're vertically aligned in many ways, um, with grades six through eight. Our nine to twelve vision was built off the six through eight, which was built off K to five. Um, and Algebra One at the high school, as I said, is now using the same curriculum as Algebra One in eighth grade. And this year, they will be exploring H Q I M for geometry and algebra two, seeing what's out there. Uh, the department is also participating in a book study on productive struggle and using what they learned there to impact their teaching. And the entire six through twelve team continues to make gains in coherence, collaboration, and vertical alignment. The Algebra One teachers as a whole have agreed on common end-of-unit assessment questions, which is huge. Um, they've met for horizontal meetings twice already this year, and we will continue that practice. Uh, we're extending our STAR math screener up through geometry in order to align, um, and gather more data. And lastly, our teachers across all of the grade levels are using what they've learned about building thinking classrooms to intentionally foster that productive struggle and heighten student engagement in order to deepen math thinking for all of our students. And so that is the update I have, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you so much. Uh, what questions do you guys have? I have a question, unless you do it.
No, go ahead. I'm formulating one.
Yeah, okay. So break and think, I'll, I'll give you some think time here. With regard to materials, how is this going to affect the materials that the eighth and the ninth grade kids use? Did we purchase those already, or what do they look like?
Yes.
Would you, would you like me to?
Textbooks?
I can. Yeah, we have, um, so it's an online student book and teacher book. At the eighth grade level, they also have workbooks that kinda complement the online version, but there is, uh, an online platform that, um, is being used at the high school level and at the eighth grade level.
Got it. And so, would you say that the ninth grade kids who are taking algebra in ninth grade, which is only a percentage of the kids, what is it, maybe two-thirds or half?
I don't know the exact number.
Right, like some number of kids are taking algebra in the high school because they didn't qualify in the eighth grade, which is fine. Do they do all their math online?
No.
Okay.
No, so.
Do they have workbooks for the ninth grade too?
So the department had decided not to purchase the workbooks, um, mostly because they felt like what they needed printed, they can print right off of the online version, and the workbooks themselves are kind of, they didn't think they were as appropriate for a high school level student, so, um, yeah, but they can print all their work, the tests we have printed, uh, that sort of thing.
Got it. So there's no textbook, per se?
There's a rese, not the, not a physical one, there's an online textbook, so the kids do have like a reference book to go to.
That they can access?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would add that these have been purchased, um, that you may remember that we had applied for and we're, we're thankful to receive a grant to support the purchase for the materials, so that helps support the materials adoption and purchase for both the eighth grade materials and the ninth grade materials as well. So currently, we're, um, Ms. McBarney is deeply involved in collecting feedback from our teachers, working with Ms. Melbourne, the department head at the high school, even with Mr. Walker, the assistant principal who's supporting, um, and Mr. Richard, who's supporting the math department to get feedback about how, how everything is going, what support is needed, and what decisions we need to make as we look ahead to next year in Algebra Two and Geometry.
So maybe this is not yet appropriate because the teachers need to do the evaluating still, but do you think that, one, I wonder if you're including special educators in that conversation, but also is it a good idea to ask the kids, the ninth graders, what they think?
My question.
But one mind.
Yeah, it is part of our implementation plan to get feedback from our students as well as the teachers. And the special educators have been part of the trainings, and they're also part of three out of five of the, uh, early release professional development we'll have this year as a way to gather their input, and we also have them involved in our horizontal meetings. So trying closely to have them have, have as much a voice as possible, um, in the feedback about how it's going. Um, and I will say, you know, the teacher, the eighth, the six through eight teachers are also evaluating the usefulness of the workbook. There are definitely pros and cons, so, you know, we'll look at, is that a necessary, um, investment or not, so.
Kind of a follow-up, it's related, but, um, the workbook issue, I think, um, is also something that's present in my mind because I'm a seventh grader who's using this, um, new curriculum, and, so I wanna ask a similar question about seventh grade, so was the decision made to purchase digital textbooks for all of the grades? Because, and, and if so, how do students access the printed version of this stuff? Like, is that on the parents to print out the material? Because that, um, I think that would be a useful question to, to ask students and parents and teachers.
Right, so currently, grades six through eight, every student has a workbook. So some teachers are opting to keep the workbook in the classroom, um, and some teachers have it going back and forth. But it's not up to families to print any, any pages.
Yeah, cause I think if you, if, um, when you are going to ask for feedback, I think it would be important to ask parents for feedback too, cause that might be, that's an issue that we're dealing with around this, this curriculum, is how to access the printed material.
Okay. I have a question.
No, I was gonna say, we have the opposite problem, that the workbook is really big, and it takes up a lot of space, you know? Big backpack on a small person, so I do think getting parent feedback can be really important, cause it's, it is like this thick. And a binder that is this thick, and that's just one subject.
In Reese's defense, she is mighty.
Like a publishing field.
Well, we can talk about that.
It should be three books instead of one book.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a, I had one other quick question. I did hear you say that the STAR assessment is going to be exercised at the ninth grade now?
Ninth and tenth.
Ninth and tenth.
Ninth and tenth.
Talk to John.
Cause geometry, some kids will take geometry tenth grade. So, I know that, I read in the common that the STAR assessments are going to be part of the parent-teacher conferences that are coming up in November. Will the freshmen and, and tenth graders also have access to that data if they sign up for conferences?
I'm gonna say yes.
Amazing.
Uh, you know, it's part, it's one data point.
Yep.
Part of the larger data picture for each and every student, but it is, it's a data point that is intended to be used to help inform instruction in, in relative areas of strength and opportunities for growth for students, so. Um, it's, it sits in that space, and, and we, you know, we've been continuing to work on building our teachers' knowledge of how to use the data and talk to parents about the data, but it is important, um, as a district, that we are providing families with that information. So we continue to work at that to support our principals and our teachers. That is the goal. That is the goal.
Amina, as MCAS loses its teeth, and we're gonna talk about this in a few minutes, but, and waiting for that autopsy report in October, having this more readily available data to help kids and help teachers is so big. I know that high school conferences are harder to come by and maybe a lot of parents are, like that's the kid's responsibility, I'm gonna step back. If I don't have a conference with the math teacher, should I email and ask for the data report or?
If I may, I, I think what, what we will do is we'll, I know Ms. McBrady works with Mr. Melbourne all of the time. They will communicate a communication system and a process to address that need because we recognize that not all families are able to make it to conferences. So stay tuned.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's fantastic. Great work. All right, everybody, we're gonna keep rolling. I think we might have lead frogged one element of the superintendent report. Did you see the budget timeline?
Oh.
You did.
Assistant Superintendent, uh, McCarron, let's talk about the budget timeline.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll give that last move as well.
So those of you familiar with the process that are on the committee from, from previous iterations, we bring forward the budget timeline annually about this time of the year. So we identify our benchmarks and talk about the work that we will do ahead, not only within this room, but the administrative level, and then also the work that's done at the budget and warrant subcommittee level. So, you know, the purpose is obviously to track ourselves and work through the budget and to publish that out, but it's also to provide clarity to the public so they understand what the benchmarks are relative to the budget process. So within the link, when you go to the timeline at the top, there's a short blurb explaining that. It will also point you to the upcoming FY27 budget development page, similar to what we did this past year, so that the links to the school committee meetings will be in there with any materials just focused on the budget so the members of the public don't have to sort through school committee agendas and meeting materials. Also, for people who are new to the committee or have not done so before, please visit the operations, excuse me, the finance and operations site, and you can check out the educational videos that explain the budgetary process. And also you can take a look at the regional agreement video, and there's lots of other information on there. That's relevant for the budget process. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's a huge wealth of resources. That webpage is fantastic. I highly recommend people check it out, spend some time. Any questions on the budget timeline? I'm noticing that there's one budget and warrant subcommittee meeting that's plugged in for February 12th. Should we be adding the other budget and warrant meetings to this timeline or not have this there?
That meeting is specific to the budget workshop process. So as we, and that's really for this committee, it's, it's there to go back to that budget warrant subcommittee to say, is there anything else? Like what are the other things we need? So it's a temperature check in the budget season.
Okay, so that's the only budget and warrant subcommittee meeting that is going to be very specific to the budget discussion?
No, there were others. I don't know what happened. It's a live doc, so all updated. So expect an update by the end of the night.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. I think that wraps up the superintendent's report.
There we go.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Kirk. So guys, we're gonna move on to our next item here, and that is the new business piece. We have a policy IF-1, which they're calling the Middle School Pathway Exploration for Career Technical Education. It's a bit of a misnomer. I'm gonna actually, should I turn it over to you or to Jackie? Kick us, kick it off. Go ahead, Kirk.
You bet. So this isn't about graduation requirements or competency determinations or any of those things. This is Middle School Pathway Exploration for Career and Technical Education. This is the language that comes straight from the statute. So this was passed last year, and this policy now simply reflects the law and the law that's been written. So as you look through the policy, you can see the overview and pointed to outline what the collaboration between Nishoba and our CTE schools are. We, all three of our towns participate at Minuteman. And so these bullets, sharing of information by October 15th of each school year is required in the law now. Inviting all eighth grade students to take part in a tour day during the school day is required by law, as well as presentations at our schools. And ensuring that any student that's absent due to attending that would be recorded as present in your, your system. And that, the last part is the hosting school may transport the students, but they are responsible for the transportation costs. And then we're also required to include the pathways. So there's a link to minuteman.org. In the event there was one of the pathways at Minuteman were to change, that's where it would be memorialized. But what you see in the policy today or what they currently have, and we'd be notified if that changes. And the last two elements are providing records to CTE schools and programs. Let me see a couple of just typos that need to be corrected with capitals. It just reflects what's already in the law within 10 days. If a parent is requesting their, their student records, we need to comply with it within 10 days. So if they sign a release, we have to follow the same regulations. And then, of course, the maintenance of records. We did bring this before the policy subcommittee, and we debated it over two meetings, and then we provided it to our attorney, who gave it to their, their policy arm of the office. They reviewed it. It all checks out at our council's office, and there you have it.
And so Jackie, you are serving as the chair this year.
There's one last thing. This policy is a mandate. The school committee is required by state regulations now to pass a policy and submit it to the department by November 1st.
All right, so Jackie's gonna serve as the chair of policy this year, so we are very grateful to you for taking over the reins. Do you want to just give the committee a quick rundown on how we adopt new policies and how this one is gonna fit in?
Yeah, so typically what happens is we get recommendations, not necessarily specific state regulations, to have updates to current policies or make new policies for policies subcommittee meets to review those recommendations. Oftentimes we meet with Superintendent Downing and discuss possible implications, differences between what was being proposed, whether it be at the state level or what is being presented by MASCE. And then as a subcommittee, we review those and decide what we're going to put forth to the school committee for a first read-through. So what you see here is the policy minus some minor edits and formatting issues. This would be the policy that we would be asking the school committee to vote on at our next meeting. The one thing that I did, I guess we had kind of, you know, made mention of it, but the specific title is referring to a middle school pathway. This is separate from the innovation pathways at the high school, and so I just want to reiterate that for our community, any families that are listening, that these are two separate things. This is really more to have very clear expectations around kids in middle schools and that they have the opportunity to go to a career, a technical education program, and that that's clearly spelled out in our policy.
All right, and so the way that we do this is Jackie's subcommittee, I'm gonna call it Jackie's subcommittee, they bring to us a policy, and this is what we call the first reading. This is your opportunity to tell the policy subcommittee anything that you would like to see changed or, you know, minus like silly grammar stuff. Then Jackie takes copious notes, and then when they meet next, they revise this and they bring back to us another version that you will see sitting in the consent agenda that will act as the second reading. We could pull it from the consent agenda if you see fit, if you want to just debate it, you don't like the second version, or we can just vote it through in the consent agenda.
May I comment on that?
Yeah.
There are gonna be three elements here. This policy, competency determination, and graduation requirements that I have to submit to Desi through their portal, and I also have to submit the school committee vote into the portal. It would probably be the cleanest for that submission so they don't have to interpret our consent agendas. That for these three particular policies, we put them in unfinished business just to have the, the record of that in the minutes.
All three of them.
It's a, it's, it's, we could do it in the consent agenda, but it makes it easier for me when I have to submit it into the portal to point to the minutes of the agenda.
Got it. That's fine. All right, so what, what comments?
But normally that's the case, yes. Just these three, we'll do that.
Go ahead, Scott.
So I have a few things, they're relatively minor, but first of all, is Minuteman the only school that, that applies all of this policy?
Correct.
Second of all, is that bulleted list, an exhaustive list of all the programs they offer?
Yes.
Current list. Right, so that was my follow-up question, which is whenever they change a program, do we need to re-vote the policy?
No, because we're referencing the Minuteman website, which is an ongoing.
Mr. Powell.
Don't have that bulleted list, doesn't have to be changed every time they change their programs?
I brought up this very question. To comply with the regulations Desi's putting, that is not, you must list the programs in your policy. And it's.
And my final comment is, the font size is inconsistent. Could we please make it all 11 points or larger?
Yep, so that was the, hey, we're gonna fix it. Make it pretty.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Share.
My question is about the bus transportation. So is, I think what it says is that this, it, the Minuteman may provide transportation. And I think what that's doing is saying, we're not responsible for the cost of that transportation. Is it, are they required to provide that experience, like that opportunity? Or do kids, if they choose not to transport kids for a visit, then do parents need to take the responsibility to do that if they want to visit or?
There are parallel policies out there for the CTE schools that they've been passing vigorously this fall. And so that's their responsibility and that's not for our concern. And our, we just know that they may provide transport. They have the right to do that. And if they do that, they do it at their own cost. Minuteman has always done that. And that's always been the practice. But that's just not in the purview of this committee and society.
Do they give you model language?
Yes.
So is this pretty close to the model?
This is the Desi model language that we have. With the exception of, we added the bullet on the transportation because that wasn't in the model language, and we wanted to be clear that the transport is at the cost of the hosting school, not the cost of Nishoba.
And so, just so you guys know, we want to keep language very close to the model that MASCE provides to us.
For clarity, it's from Desi.
Oh, it's from Desi. This particular one's from Desi, and that's unusual.
Yes.
Okay, so any other commentary on the substance of this?
The very last bit, the maintenance of records, are those records considered like student records and not subject to open record laws and that kind of thing?
Mr. Simon, you asked such a good question. Yes, they are and no, they're not. So if they're identifiable to a student, yes, it's a student record. Is it a public record? It depends on what kind of record you create. So if you create a general report, and I, and I say create, not ask to create, but if you create a general report that is not identifiable as a student record, then it is a public record.
Did anybody request? Any other questions?
Assistant Superintendent McCarron is the expert on records in the district, and I hope I answered that close enough.
All right, everybody, so the policy subcommittee is gonna take this back to their next subcommittee meeting. They will doctor it up, probably not much, because there's not much that we asked them to change. So we will find this second reading in unfinished business at our next meeting.
Yeah.
And then you said that you're gonna be bringing two additional ones soon thereafter.
Yes, so we should have, we're meeting on October 29th with Superintendent Downing and Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend and someone else.
Perhaps Ms. Speck is joining us, or is Dr. Boynton that's joining us for that policy? It could just be the Assistant Superintendent.
I think, I think.
We have working group meetings with a group of people at the high school, so I think we can represent their, their opinions at that, their interests at that meeting.
All right, so more policies to come. Thank you, everybody. We will move the agenda now to the next item, this unfinished business we have at this time. The next piece is gonna be subcommittee report outs, and I'd like to start with the audit advisory, and we'll give anybody else time, but let's start with the audit advisory because Scott has some questions business for us, but what's going on?
Yes, so as mentioned at the last meeting, we had a vacancy on the audit advisory committee. A Bolton resident, which is the township that we have a vacancy for, Mr. Jeff Tackle has graciously agreed to serve on the audit advisory committee. He's a longtime Bolton resident, has, has been helpful in getting other community projects done, so I think he'd be a great addition to the committee, and so hopefully the committee will agree to appoint him to the audit advisory committee.
So we're gonna break with our protocol just a tad here and try to get a vote tonight, if that's okay with everybody? All right, and so do you want to make a motion, Scott?
I'd like to move that Jeff Tackle of Bolton be added to the audit advisory committee.
I second that. Any discussion? Excellent. All those in favor? Any opposed? Wonderful. Welcome, Mr. Tackle. We appreciate your service. Thank you so much. And I wonder if there are any other subcommittee report outs?
So, just for our policy subcommittee, so you'll be voting on the CTE pathways policy at the October 22nd meeting, and then we will have in that next iteration, the first read-throughs for the graduation requirements and the competency determination policies. And given the timeliness, I, I think it would just be really helpful, like what everyone did today, if you have very specific questions that we can address then and take care of before the next meeting when we vote would be fantastic.
All right. Any other subcommittee report outs?
You already mentioned the communications subcommittee is in the student council on December.
What? Ish. The December, the December stucobium.
And we're going to have another meeting before then to just review the plan for that meeting on October 14th and look out the goals.
Any other subcommittee report outs? So everybody, we have our planning calendar. I wonder, Alita, do you have it handy to throw it up there? Our next meeting is going to be, as you know, remote. It'll be on October 22nd. So we have a few things already listed. We will be adding an executive session, so I'm gonna put that on there.
The 22nd, right?
On the 22nd. Some more to come on that. So here's what you guys can see on the planning calendar. MCAS presentation is a big one, that information's just been released. They put the kibosh on the portal, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we won't talk about that now. And there's just a couple of other things. Is there anything you guys would like to see added, if not to this meeting, to the
Is there stuff further down?
Nope.
No, okay.
For now. Um. Sorry, I'll follow these stuff. Okay.
I should, I should. You asked me to do the building committee.
Yeah, okay. So let's finish this, then we'll go. Anything else for the agenda building? As always, guys, just shoot me an email.
The other thing that comes to mind is we're working out a proposal for.
E and D.
I said, the E and D.
E and D.
And we expect to finalize that at next week's B and W meeting, so I think that school committee meeting might be the right time to provide a first view of that proposal.
All right, and so we could do E and D. Can you just scroll down a little bit, Alita? How do you feel about that?
Yeah. I think this will be like a first. I think this will be like a first and second reading kind of situation so we can get feedback from the committee before we finalize it.
Sounds good. Any other things? All right, without objection, I'm going to roll the agenda back to one more subcommittee sheriff, okay? And that is for the building committee.
Yeah, Building Committee. We have a really important meeting happening next Thursday night. This is the guaranteed maximum price approval meeting that is happening next Thursday evening on Zoom. You can find those links, will be posted appropriately. The committee has worked incredibly hard over these first three years to get us to this place. We used a construction management risk methodology, which brings us to this point. So if we had used the design-to-build methodology, we wouldn't even have a hole in the ground today because you would have to get to the 100% before you could proceed. But under construction management risk, we were able to start in the early trades and get moving with the process. So this meeting is going to be the aggregation of the bid packages that we've approved throughout the process, brought together into one document for approval, and ultimately submitted to the MSP. So we're really excited that we're at that benchmark. It's an important benchmark for us next week.
Any questions on the building committee meeting and where we're at with that? Have you guys got to see the building construction? It's pretty impressive. I had to walk all the way around the back to a soccer game, which took me like an hour. I act so slow. But it is really building out, the backside of it is gigantic right now.
It is, and Madam Chair, we are, right now, we have it on our schedule for the school building committee to walk the building prior to its December meeting. And so I would extend that if any member of this committee wanted to join us, they just need to know in advance so we can have PPE prepared for you to have a chance to, to walk the construction zone and check it out.
And they did alert us at the last meeting that they're looking to button the building up by the end of November. So.
Yeah.
And they're gonna start heating, putting in some temporary heating. So, I mean, they really are turning corners every single day.
Yeah, the final concrete slab should be in there end of November, and it'll be weather tight, and so they will do temporary heating so those wintertime workers can stay, stay warm while they're doing their stuff.
Yeah, and it's just good construction, so. How do we let you know if we want to walk that?
Just send me an email.
Okay.
And I, I'm gonna send out an invitation, so I send the invitation out to our leadership council as well.
All right, guys. I'm gonna move to adjourn. All those in favor?
Jackie?
All right, good meeting, everybody, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.